I think where everybody's here, Mayor, you can go ahead and get started.
Thank you very much. Well, welcome everyone to the May 5th, 2021 City Council Meeting, City of Los Angeles. In the virtual world, temporary public comment email has been established for the city council meetings. Emails must be received by 4:00 PM of the meeting. Email your comments for public hearings and public comments. The email address is cityclerk@losbanas.org. Remember that your emails are limited to 250 words. You may also drop off a hard copy at City Hall at 520 J Street in the Waterbilt Drop, or you may mail it to City Hall at 520 J Street, Los Angeles, California, 93635. And so we'll start this evening with an invocation from Pastor Steve Hammond from Beth El Community Church.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon with faithful hearts for your goodness towards us and your perfect faithfulness. We thank you that you have been gracious to Los Angeles and have blessed us in many ways. We lift up our mayor and city council in this meeting. We ask your abundant blessing upon them and their families. We ask that you would give them divine wisdom and guidance as they lead us through these difficult times that we live in. As they deliberate over important items for our city, direct their decisions as they consider what is best for every citizen in Los Angeles. We ask your abundant blessing upon our city and its citizens. We pray for the physical, mental, and spiritual health and well-being of every person in the city of Los Angeles. Continue to lead us through this pandemic and give us victory over it and its effects. Prosper our city even as our souls prosper. Guide us through the recovery of our families, our businesses, and our lives. May we look to you for answers for help, wisdom, for provision, and for blessing. You are our source of life, our protection, and our salvation. We thank you and ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Hammond. We will now ask our acting police chief, Haddon, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, I'm sorry. I need to call the meeting to order first. Sorry, Chief. First, I will call the meeting to order at 4:09 PM. Now we will have our Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Chief.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Chief. Ms. Maloney, roll call.
Jones?
Present.
Lambert?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Yamas?
Here.
Aria?
Here. We have a call. We will now be moving on to consideration of approval of the agenda. We will have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Portim, Lewis. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert will second it.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. I have a motion by Councilmember Portim, Lewis, and I have a second by Councilmember Lambert to approve the agenda as submitted. Ms. Maloney, roll call.
Jones?
Present, or yes?
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Agenda has been approved. We're now on to move on to presentations. We have quite a few. It's lots of teachers being recognized along with our Day of Prayer this year. So the first thing, our first proclamation, and that's what these proclamations, how they look. It is recognizing Teacher Appreciation Week and National Teacher Day. And for that, we are present, Ms. Jennifer Wilkin will be receiving. So here is how it reads. Whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by molding future citizens through guidance and education. And whereas teachers are constantly learning so they can adapt to the ever-changing needs of a diverse population in order to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams that reach beyond the limits of their present circumstances. And whereas success begins in the classroom, and our teachers are the people who inspire students every day and instill a lifelong love for learning. And whereas our teachers are a dynamic force in the learning process and consistently exhibit their steadfast commitment to students through their willingness to give up their time, energy, talents, and resources. And whereas teachers are more than just instructional leaders, they are also role models, mentors, motivators, listeners, encouragers, caregivers, and coaches who significantly, significantly impact the lives of children. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Angeles do hereby recognize May 3rd through the 7th, 2021, as Teacher Appreciation Week and May 4th, 2021, as National Teacher Day and encourage all citizens to express appreciation to teachers for their dedication and commitment. And we thank you, teachers. I am a teacher, so I understand the job pretty well. Ms. Wilkin, would you like to say anything this evening?
I'd just like to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to all of the council members. Teachers in Los Angeles have worked tirelessly over the last year, if not for countless years, and a little appreciation goes a long way with our group of teachers. So thank you very much.
And thank you for all you do. Take care now. Our next presentation will be going, Pastor Steve Hammond will be accepting for the National Day of Prayer. Whereas in God we trust is more than a slogan that appears on our currency. It describes an attitude shared by most of those who founded our great nation. And whereas those who trust God pray, and the history of our country has been and continues to be indelibly marked by people who come to God in prayer. And whereas, while prayer is a deeply personal experience and its expression is shaped by different religious convictions, it is a meaningful part of life for many people. And whereas our greatest leaders have always turned to prayer in times of crisis, and many men and women representing every walk of life pray. And whereas the President and the Governors of the United States have set aside a special day of prayer and invite all Californians to pray for our nation and our state. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Angeles do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 6th, 2021, as National Day of Prayer in Los Angeles and encourage our fellow citizens to humbly join us in prayer, asking that God would give its people wisdom to differentiate between what is important and what is not, the courage to make difficult decisions, a willingness to ask for and to receive forgiveness, and the strength to meet the challenges that come before us. Pastor Hammond, we'll present this to you. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for your continued support for the faith community, our city, and the recognition that prayer is important and it was something that our nation was founded upon, the principles. We appreciate the recognition. And we also want to invite everyone, tomorrow is National Day of Prayer. We normally have it at City Hall, but due to COVID, we're going to shift it to have it at Beth El Community Church at 415 Main Street. It will be from 12 to 1 o'clock. We have nine pastors involved this year. Very happy about that. We will be providing lunch afterward, and so we invite everyone to come out and join us in prayer. We do have safety precautions in place. Our chairs are moved six feet apart. And so when you come in, wear a mask. We'll take your temperature and sanitize what you get to your seat. You can take your mask off. This is for safety precautions. We appreciate that. But we look forward to the event tomorrow and thank you on behalf of your community.
Thank you very much for all you do for our community. Our next presentation is a certificate of recognition. And this is going to go to Mrs. Vicky Costello for authoring the book Patty's Predicament. And she got her book published. She is an outstanding teacher. I've been in her classroom many times, visiting to sing with her students. And I can tell you, I've had the honor and privilege of going into her classroom and also teaching her daughter. And we're very happy and pleased to be able to present a certificate of recognition for you this evening. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. I'm just honored and humbled. Just that even you published a book, that's pretty impressive. But COVID brings around curses and blessings, and this was just a burden on my heart that I've had my long time and had a little extra time on my hands. And it's about a year process, so thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for all you do and thank you for teaching those children. Looking forward to, now that you've got this published, we'll be expecting another one in another year, right?
I like the way you think.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you bet. So the next is going to be a series of certificates of recognition, and they're going to be received by Principal Ms. Zelda Diaz Harper from Miano School. And they're going to go to Mrs. Mendosis', 2021 kindergarten class at Miano Elementary for being the Imagine Learning Premiers category winner for Imagine Math grades pre-K through second. And Mrs. Robinson's 2020 to 2021, fourth grade class for being the Imagine Learning Premiers category winner for Imagine Math grades third through sixth. For Mr. Dialba's 2020-21, sixth grade class for being elected as the National Imagine Literacy Bowl MVP Classroom for averaging 240-plus minutes during the literacy bowl competition. And to Mrs. Diaz Harper for her leadership at RM Miano Elementary School and for assisting her teachers in their classes in achieving their many accomplishments during the 2020-2021 school year. And to Miano Elementary School for being named the premier school category winner for Imagine Math for grades pre-K through second grade and for receiving an Imagine Learning Blockbuster Award for Imagine Math for grades third through sixth for the 2020-21 academic year. And finally, Miano Elementary School at recognition of receiving a $1,500 something for kids grant and a $500 Scotts Miracle Grow grant, which will support the Miano Youth Garden Program. Congratulations. Mrs. Diaz Harper, would you like to say a few words? We have, we have Zola.
No, but I see that Jennifer Wilkin's still on. She could accept on their behalf.
Yes. Jen, would you like to accept on behalf of Miano Schools, since that's your home territory?
I would love to accept on behalf of Miano School, as I am a sixth grade teacher there. So thank you very much for the recognition, and I will pass along the kind words.
You bet. Thank you so much for all everyone's doing. And remember, we love to recognize and honor the success and excellence in our town. So send me an email or any of our staff here and get to me or call me, find me, and we'll get certificates and proclamations accordingly out to really celebrate the greatness that is our city. Thank you, everyone, for coming for your special presentations. We'll move on now to the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest, that is, within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers may submit their comments via written statement, limited to 250 words or less, or by dropping it off in the utility payment box at City Hall 520 J Street, or by emailing cityclerk@losbanas.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the city council meeting. Ms. Maloney, do we have any comments this evening?
I'm just checking again real quick to see, I see no comments.
Thank you. Seeing and hearing no comments, we will move on to the consideration of approval of the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Mrs. Maloney? You're muted.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
The items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrants numbers 226601 through 226734 in the amount of $410,635.67. City Council Resolution Number 6342. Accepting public improvements for Racket Club Estates, APN 428030021000, generally near San Luis Street to the south, Racket Club Drive to the east, and Mercy Springs Road to the west for Hassan Amadi. City Council Resolution Number 6361. Adopting a revised budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year as it pertains to increasing expenditures for fire department tuition reimbursement costs from Measure P funds in the amount of $1,589.70 and Measure H funds in the amount of $2,049.03. City Council Resolution Number 6362. Adopting a revised budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year as it pertains to increasing expenditures for fire department specialized equipment in the amount of $25,050. City Council Resolution Number 6363. Accepting a grantee for a 67-plus square foot strip of land for right-of-way purposes at the southwest corner of Travertine Way and Badger Flat Road and authorizing the acting city manager to execute all required documents for this dedication acceptance for Anderson Homes. City Council Resolution Number 6364. Authorizing the city manager, the acting city manager, to execute Amendment Number 7 to the Landscape Maintenance Services Contract between the city of Los Angeles and Ronnie's Inc. as it pertains to adding landscape services in the South Point subdivision along Ward Road and Overland Avenue in the amount of $850 per month. City Council Resolution Number 6365. Awarding contract for legal advertising to the Los Angeles Enterprise for fiscal year ending June 30, 2022 and authorizing the acting city manager to execute agreement, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you very much. We'll go through council to see if anyone would like to pull any items for either discussion or a separate vote. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, I'd like to pull Item B for a separate discussion.
Just discussion or separate vote?
Just discussion.
Discussion. Thank you. And Mr. Lambert?
No items here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull Item F for discussion.
Discussion. Thank you. Item F?
That's correct.
Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No items.
Okay, thank you very much. So let's go ahead and pull the items for discussion. Item B, for that, we go, we'll be going to our city manager and our Public Works. Oh, Mr. Possession, there he is. I didn't see you on the screen, Mr. Possession.
I was trying to find myself on the screen, too.
There we go. You ended up at the bottom of my screen, and I missed you down there. Acting Public Works Director, City Engineer, Mr. Possession.
Would you, Councilmember Jones, would you like for me to go over the item or simply answer your questions?
No, I just want to simplify some concerns. some concerns I have on this project and so I just wanna make it clear to staff, so this hasn't really been an applicant that's been doing things, I would say, up to par on quality. Um, I am pretty disappointed in the overall uh, in some of the improvements that he's done. But later on, I, I'm guessing this applicant is trying to get this property ready to sell. And he's gonna sell it off uh, before he builds. And I just wanna make sure that staff has notes down for whoever that buyer may be, know what the requirements are gonna be because I know there's a, a partial fence there that is, is not even, I would say remotely correct or finished. That I wanna make sure that any buyer coming in that requires that the city knows what has to be done and what's expected before they buy it. So I just wanna make that clear with the staff and that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you, Mr. Possession.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Lewis, Item F, uh, has asked to pull Item F and for that we will once again go to Acting Public Works Director, City Engineer, Mr. Possession.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Lewis, would you like a full presentation? Uh, and for that I can have uh, our Parks and Rec Operations Manager, Mr. Joel Fein, uh, present that to you for both of us. We are ready to answer any questions.
Uh, excuse me, no, I, I don't need a full presentation. Um, but I do have a recommendation for staff. Um, in the body of the presentation, it speaks of uh, what the charge would be for uh, bi-weekly landscape services and bi-weekly irrigation services. And on the estimate, um, that was uh, put in our packet, it, it gives a price, but it doesn't give a description. Now, I'm sure in the original contract that those things are described out, but for the sake of the council making decisions moving forward, I think that uh, we need to have that information spelled out on the estimate. Uh, if not spelled out in the body of the presentation to the council, it should be spelled out on the estimate and not just, you know, bi-weekly landscape, a dollar amount and irrigation, a dollar amount. So that it doesn't put us in the position of having to go back and ask staff for a copy of the uh, uh, the agreement. Uh, it's spelled out as we look at the information. So that, that's what I would like to request in the future going forward that whenever we get a request from uh, the service provider, make sure that the, the information that's being estimated is spelled out so that we understand exactly what they're going to be doing for our city. And, and that's, that's my, my request for the evening.
I agree with your comment and that's a point well taken and I will make sure that happens.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Possession. Ms. Lewis? So with that, shall I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lambert here. We would like to make a motion to consider approving the consent agenda as read.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Jones, I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Jones? Uh, so I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert and a second by Councilmember Jones to approve the consent agenda as read. Ms. Maloney, roll call please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. And uh, we will move on to the League of California Cities Presentation. Now known as CalCities, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Qualls?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Look, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'll start if I can?
Yes, Mr. Breezy.
I'll introduce Steve for us. Uh, Stephen Qualls is the Central Valleys District Manager for uh, Public Affairs for the League of California Cities. We were asked to provide a presentation on the services, the activities and the support that the, the League provides the city. And so there's no better person than to provide this presentation than Stephen Qualls. He's been an active member with us. Uh, I've known him for several years and last couple of times I sat in his chair. So he's well versed in the activities and the support that, that he provides Los Banas. And uh, I'd like to turn the floor over to him, say, "Welcome, Steve. Thanks for taking the time to be with us tonight and the floor is yours."
Thank you, Mr. Breezy. I appreciate it. Yes, um, my name is Stephen Qualls. And yes, um, the presentation, the introduction is correct. I appreciate that. Um, so just a little about myself for those who may not know me. Um, I've been with the League for thirteen years now. Prior to that, I was working um, in the Bay Area and I was sitting on the Houston City Council. And normally it's funny when you say Houston, anywhere except for Central Valley, people always go Texas. And so they don't obviously know where the city of Houston is. So I was on the City Council for three years and I was fortunate enough to be able to get this job. And I was very engaged with the League beforehand. I was on policy committees and other engagement, you know, education opportunities and things like that. So um, I want to thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. I've got a short presentation I'm gonna be doing for you tonight. Let me get this going here. Uh, okay, slideshow. So I'd just like to say that uh, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, um, City Staff members in the audience, I want to thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight. Um, I'd like to share with you a few facts about CalCities and how we work with our member cities to protect local government control. So the League of California's office is located in Sacramento. This is where lobbyists and our analysts meet with and work with our legislators. Our analysts this year have analyzed over eight-hundred, eighteen-hundred-and-eighty-five of the twenty-five-hundred bills that were introduced this year. They're looking for bills that might, you know, affect our cities either adversely or favorably. Have something to do with our local control or our local funding. Um, the state is split up into sixteen different areas. Ours is considered the Central Valley Division. Ours consists of six counties and twenty-five cities. So San, San Joaquin, Stan, Sospres, Ed, half of Madera, and then twelve Acalberish counties. Um, the League has seven League Policy Committees and a Board of Directors. Those policy committees are the Community Services, Environmental Quality, Governance, Transportation and Labor Relations, Housing Committee and Economic Development, and that by the way is the policy committee that I sat on. Public Safety, Revenue and Taxation, Transportation, Communication and Public Works. Now, if any of you find any of these committees interesting and would like to serve on those committees, please let me know. Each division is allowed two appointees, each policy committee, and we make our appointments in the fall. The League also has five diversity caucuses. They have the Women's Caucus, the Latino Caucus, the African-American Caucus, Asian Pacific Island Caucus, and LGBTQ Caucus. And then we have ten professional departments, including the Mayor's and Councilmembers, the Fire Chiefs, the Police Chiefs, uh, City Managers, City Clerks among, um, or among the few, among the few of them. I have to move this thing out here so I get to my arrow coming up. So, the League has a number of ways that we advocate for the cities and for our member cities. Uh, one of them is that we provide legal advocacy. And this is how we protect the city's interests in the courts. We write uh, advocacy briefs for a number of cities every year. A great number of cities every year. We have uh, legal counsel on staff. And so that's obviously a big part of our, our uh, uh, membership benefits that we provide. Then we have ballot advocacy and that again protects the city's interests, you know, when we make, to produce our ballot measures. This is done through our PAC called City PAC. And some of the accomplishments that we have done through our ballot measures are, two thousand and four, the League authored and was passed by great margin, Proposition One A, which constitutionally protected your property taxes. And, and up and down the whole state, not just about Los Banas. And then in two thousand and ten, after seeing the state continually derate our, our gas taxes, we authored and passed again with a great majority, Proposition Twenty-two, which constitutionally protected your fuel taxes. The League has, does have sixteen different divisions and each of our divisions has quarterly meetings. Ours are in March, June, September and December. Um, our next meeting in June is scheduled to be virtual, but we're hoping in September, if things open up and the numbers are cracked, we'll be in person. We try to have these meetings in north and south locations since our division is so long. So I'd really encourage you to attend these quarterly meetings. Try the first one here in, in June. Virtually, we try to have an entertaining speaker. Um, and then if you can, you know, join us at our September meeting. I don't have a location for it yet, but when I do, I'll be sending that out to all of you. And we have the California Civic Leadership Institute and this is really to help people, you know, elected officials who are really serious about ready for office. There's a hundred and twenty-seven alumni who have, who have uh, completed our course. And there's twenty-nine currently sitting in the legislature right now. And then we have our League partners. These are businesses that supply goods and services to cities and care for our city. They really are a big part of our organization. Now, your role is the advocate. City officials really are the cornerstone of our political strain. You are the leaders and legislators and people, person, people in your committees look to you for information and leadership. Many ways to become an advocate is to get engaged. And those are through League, some of our informational opportunities that we have for you. We have CA Cities Advocate. We have Bill Information Letters. Now, on our website, there's a uh, section called Bill Search. And you can put in any bill number and it'll tell you what our position on the bill is. And if we support an advocate or suppo, oppose it, there will be a sample letter. And then also they'll give you a short explanation of the bill. We have Western City Magazine, which has some really good articles on what cities up down the state are doing. California City Finance, in case you wanna catch up on things such as Prop two-eighteen and things like that. And then Law Books, and then we have our Action Center where you can send letters and uh, advocate for the position the League takes. And then again, please like us on Facebook and then follow us on Twitter. We're all over social media. One of our examples of our educational opportunities which help you become a better advocate is our Mayor's and Councilmembers Executive Forum. This will be held this June. And unfortunately, it will be virtual again, but still, I encourage you to enroll for it. Um, and so twenty-twenty, these are some of the topics that were covered. These are for the current sessions, so I always suggest you send more than one person so you can cover all the topics. And then the information materials are available after the conference. But so, cybersecurity in your city are growing risk. Housing and homelessness update. Effective city manager and city council communication. Key to good governance and city success. Then coping with the new reality of bi-district elections. And, and as May reminded, that as a City Council Member, I always make sure to take, take advantage of these educational opportunities. And please get to know me. I'm hoping that after this uh, travel ban we have put, put on, is lifted, the numbers are, are, you know, acceptable, that I'll be able to introduce myself personally to each of you, either at our City Council, at our uh, quarterly meetings or maybe in person. And hopefully at the annual conference, which is currently being scheduled to be in person. Um, what I'd like to do is I distribute to you advocacy alerts. Um, I try to keep you updated on the political dynamics and influence legislation. Sometimes people are cannot, are always gonna be happy with our positions that we take in legislation. Obviously, there is a process in Sacramento. It has to be followed. Presentations are legislative developments. Um, try to help you to support, to draft these sample letters. We will always provide you with a sample letter, but if you feel there's some editing needs to be done, I'll always be there to help you. And then just train your city staff in legislative process. Of course, I'm sure you're all familiar with this, but you really, to, to help and increase your role as an advocate, make sure you build relationships with your legislators and the district staff. Uh, your local media is very important and different individuals and organizations in your area. And the administration, the officials, if you can, both at the county and the state level. And then make sure that you work with your other city, county and regional officials. This is another opportunity that is great when we do our division meetings. Could you get to meet the people from the other cities in our division, in our area? And even from the county sometimes, and you can, you can uh, share back best practices. And then somebody may be familiar with my urgent emails I send out. Those are telling you, please, and nothing else, to please read this email. I mean, I don't expect you to read everyone. I'd love if you did, but I'd really appreciate if you could read this one. And what I'm gonna be asking you is to personally send a letter of support or make calls to your legislators on legislation that we found to either be beneficial or like you said adverse to our cities. Or, and also for the city to send a letter also of opposition. And to, you know, work with me. If I have to organize a meeting with our legislators, such as we have our Legislative Action Day coming up, or maybe put together news conferences, we've done a number of those. And then our lead, our letter writing and our media campaigns, all those are things you can help me with. Some of the benefits of the League membership is we have virtual webinars and they are free to you. And we've had some really good ones lately on uh, economic recovery after the COVID pandemic. Um, you know, disaster preparedness, uh, things like that. And we also did, some of the webinars, we call them roundtables, and really encourage you to sign up for those. They've been very well attended, attended up and down the state. It's a great opportunity again for you to educate yourself and keep up with the, what's going on in the state. Um, some of our conferences I mentioned earlier, the ones this earlier this year, the New Mayor's and Councilmembers Academy. If you're not able to attend it this year, I would suggest you try to do it next year. It will be hopefully in person next year. And they're always held in Sacramento, so it's not, you know, a lot of traveling for you. And um, just a great way to be able to get up to date, you know, learn new things and also do, to meet with the other fellow Mayor's and Councilmembers. And our City Managers Conference, our Planning Commissioners Conference, I used to, I attended those when I was on the planning commission. And then Legislative Action Day, which is coming up next week. Um, please register, you've probably seen my emails on it. Register with the League and register with me, RSVP with me. Um, I'm currently uh, scheduling meetings up and with our legislators up and down the state. I mean, our division, obviously they will be virtual. We already have our meeting scheduled with uh, Senator Capiero. And that will be on the twelfth at twelve-thirty. And so please, we'd love to have you join us and the more the merrier, obviously, the better, the greater participation, the better. Uh, we will be having a legislative briefing prior to the meetings and we have five or six key bills that we want to discuss with our legislators. And then also you can discuss with your legislator, items that are important to your city and your region. Then the Mayor's and Councilmembers Executive Forum, as I mentioned earlier. Great opportunity, great education opportunity. Um, this is for, again, it will be virtually and luckily, but another good education opportunity. And then the annual conference, that's our feature event for the year. Uh, again, great opportunity, a huge number of concurrent sessions going on, everything, you know, financing. Uh, obviously economic development's gonna be a big one after the pandemic or during the pandemic, since we don't know when it's gonna end. Um, but I really would love to have you sign up for those. And then uh, this like, so we'll be in person, it's gonna be in Sacramento, so again, not a lot of traveling for you. And um, that's a great opportunity for me to meet you personally at our annual conference. And then um, League Leaders, um, this is where we meet our, we set our strategic goals for the year. Their strategic goals are the goals and, and um, items and concerns we see facing the cities, the state and our legislators and our city councils in the coming year. Um, I was fortunate enough when my final year of the City Council, I was the Vice President of our division. And at League Leaders, we invite the Vice President and the President of each division. Then we have the Chair People, the Chair and the Co-Chair of each of the policy committees, the other board members, who we meet together. We break out into uh, breakout groups and we get the bush paper out and we just brainstorm on what the issues we think are gonna face the state and our cities in the coming year. And then we take those pieces of paper into one room, we all vote out, we do the three black dot thing, but now we do electronically. And we vote on what we think are the three or four top goals that the League needs to focus on the coming year. And this, as a uh, Councilmember and uh, myself as a, a League employee, really shows me the organization is a bottoms-up organization because we are the ones, and you are the ones, excuse me, who set those goals for League to focus on. And these are goals that our lobbyists will use when reviewing bills that have been introduced and uh, when, when meeting with our legislators in the during conferences. Uh, sorry, there's no bonuses for this. And so these are this year's strategic goals. Uh, to secure state and federal funding for local COVID-nineteen public health response and economic recovery. The League was very, very instrumental in getting the si, the state to release the funds that they got through the CARES Act additional funds. Uh, they wanted to not give it to cities who were above fifty thousand. Were able to, to get that included in it. And then at the uh, federal level, we worked with our national organization, the National League of Cities and to get um, amendments and to get a lot of the, of changes to the original bill to make sure that there is adequate funds to our cities. And then we're still waiting for the guidelines on those, but we know that they're gonna be a lot less restrictive than the CARES Act funds were. Those are only allowed to be used for the pandemic-related expenses, COVID-nineteen related expenses. And now we're hoping to be able to use them for a lot more things such as housing assistance, rental assistance and um, uh, replacing some of the funds that we expended that were not replaced during And um uh replacing some of the funds that we expended that were not replaced during the CARES Act. And a lot of cities use their reserves, and we want to be able to replace those reserves. And put them back up to where they were before the pandemic hit, and was so devastating to our revenues. Um, excuse me, number two, secure funding to increase the supply of affordable housing and resources to help individuals at risk or already experiencing homelessness. Excuse me, this is obviously a big issue up and down the state and Central Valley, and I'm sure there's probably a big one in your area also. And then to improve state and local coordination and planning, to make sure we strengthen our community disaster preparedness, our resiliency and our recovery. And then protect and modernize our critical infrastructure. That's everything from streets, roads, water systems, and also to broadband, which is a very important issue now. We're getting uh funds federally through luckily through our lobbying. There was ten billion dollars that were gonna be given um to uh that were gonna be taken out, and we're able to get the money put back in. For the broadband up and down across the United States. And then please attend the division meetings um to participate in these educational opportunities that I've mentioned. Uh, stay engaged, you know, our letters of communication. Um, I I can't stress enough um how important your role is. Um, when you contact your legislator, you've opened the door for our lobbyists when they go to meet with these legislators. Uh, most legislators are really engaged in their own bills. They're not aware, I mean, there are almost twenty five hundred bills that are introduced this year. There's no way they can have all those bills in their radar. So when they hear from the from their constituents, and our lobbyist goes in and talks to them, says, hey, I'd like to talk to you about, let's see, S B three three nine. And otherwise, normally the legislator go, well, I haven't heard about that bill. But now when he's heard from you, he can say, oh, yeah, I got a letter from the mayor of the city council, the city of Los Banos about that bill. So it's on their radar. So that gives us one up, but our lobbyist goes and then talks to them about our concerns with the bill. And maybe possibly investments that we want to make, or maybe there's a bill that we'd like to have introduced, and we can have their their help on that. So please, I really want to show us how important that is for you to do those things. And with that, um, I'm gonna finish my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Now, I'd like to thank you very much for allowing me to come before you tonight. And I hope that this has been an educational opportunity for you, and again, please, get engaged. Join us next week for our Legislative Action Days, a great opportunity. You've probably met with your legislators before. This is a good opportunity for you to discuss with them the bills that we have identified as being important to our cities. And with that, again, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Qualls. Uh, we'll go through council and see if anyone has any questions. Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
Uh, no questions, uh, right now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, um, my question is, um, is the League still putting out the Western Cities Magazine?
Yes, they are, and it's gone virtual now.
Okay.
Yeah, you can find that link on my presentation, or you can go to our to our website, you'll find it there.
Okay, will they ever put out our copies again?
I I doubt it. It's just not cost effective.
I see. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Uh, Mr. Yamas?
Mr. Mayor, uh, no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Qualls, thank you so much for coming tonight. As my colleagues in city and state government say, if you're not at the table, you're either on the table or on the menu. The League of Cities keeps us at the table. Last thing we want to do is be on the menu, so uh we appreciate you coming tonight. And uh have, I would normally say have safe travels, but I imagine you're probably.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh, the city council. Thank you for seeing us talk, having us here. And again, please stay engaged, and I look forward to meeting you all personally.
Thank you. Thank you. City Manager Briefing for setting this up for us tonight. This will take us to item nine. We have lots of presentations tonight. This one is by a lobbyist, and I will have Acting City Manager Breezy introduce. Uh, the representatives from Emmanuel Jones and Associates.
Evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Again, uh, this is our legal advocacy group, Emmanuel Jones and Associates. Tonight, we have a presentation from David Jones and Kira Ross, members of that group. Just to provide some context, the League of Cities, Stephen Qualls, their representation is on the broader, bigger topics that we deal with across the state. These municipalities and jurisdictions. Whereas Emmanuel Jones and Associates provides more of that scalpel approach on individual bills, individual topics of interest for the city of Los Banos specifically. And um, I'm pleased to have them on board tonight. I want to say thank you ahead of time for them getting a presentation for us. And I will turn the floor over to them. Uh, yeah, looks like they're ready. Floor's yours, guys. Thank you, David and Kira.
Great. Thank you. Uh, again, I'd like to echo Stephen in thanking you for giving us time on your agenda. Uh, as the chief mentioned, he asked us to give you a brief description of our firm, since uh unfortunately, we haven't been able to travel down there because of COVID. And then talk specifically about what we've done for Los Banos. So, next slide. Okay, Emmanuel Jones was formed in nineteen eighty seven by Ken Emanuel. Uh, it specializes in municipal representation. Uh, we currently have thirteen city clients. Uh, we have some that are public utilities, so we are very well versed in energy issues. We've also worked with counties, not-for-profit housing developers. I know uh from from some of you, it's very important on job creation and manufacturing. So one of our clients, the California Manufacturing and Technology Consultants, they get a federal grant, we got them a state grant to match it. That looks at uh expanding and retaining manufacturing jobs in California. So that, I think, is a is a good fit. We provided legislative advocacy for the city since two thousand and sixteen. Uh, our client base is exclusively uh not-for-profit or municipal, so we have no clients we pack. So we are not going to the French Laundry for lunches or dinner, so so that's uh not happening with us. Uh, we work closely with the League, and uh we are especially work work a lot with the League and Stephen and others. On local control and land use, because that's been uh very much on uh on the table, as the mayor said. Uh, next slide. Uh, my background, um, I've uh been with Emmanuel Jones since two thousand. I've got thirty years of legislative experience. I started in Washington, D C as the federal lobbyist for the League. Uh, then I got happily transferred back to Sacramento and worked as the uh rev and tax, public works, public safety. And transportation lobbyist, and then got shifted to be the League's lead rev and tax and budget lobbyist. So my background is definitely skewed towards public works and public safety and budget issues. And we're very adept at working on budget issues. I did direct the League's federal program, so I'm also, don't get back to Washington very often, but I'm also conversant in federal issues. Sometimes that's very helpful if you've got a joint request of a state federal with that. Next slide.
I'll step in here. Good afternoon. Uh, so I'm Kira Ross. Uh, my background with the firm, I actually started my time in the Capitol Building, spent about ten years there. I finished off in the Assembly Natural Resources Committee. Where I oversaw all the bills on climate change and SEQA and issues pertaining to resources. I was chief consultant for several years. Left there and went to the League of Cities, where I was their lead lobbyist overseeing all of the environmental and community service issues. Uh, included stopping both policy committees, also worked with a number of the departmental staff. Was there for about seven years, and then I've been at Emmanuel Jones for the last seven years, where I've worked a lot on uh the resources issues that I know well. But also added to that all the utility and energy, water and power issues, very familiar with water quality issues as well. Um, and I've also done a lot of work on housing issues. So between David and myself, we have a pretty good coverage of a background on all the issues.
Awesome. Slide please. Okay, uh, so uh as as asked, uh, we will we'll go through the specific things that we've been focusing on for Los Banos. And I guess the the biggest one was the uh uh and and my background is budget work and rev and tax work. And we were uh successful with working with your legislators and getting a direct five million dollar uh grant for the city of Los Banos to build their public safety training center. So that was approved in twenty nineteen, and uh we're very proud of that work. Uh, we were also asked to help with uh your Highway one fifty two street crossing. I remember the uh videos of the uh gentleman dressed in the chicken costume out there on one fifty two trying to stop the uh the cars going across. So we worked with Caltrans and uh and your staff on that. Uh, we were also asked recently to help assist, connect this the city uh with the State Department of Public Health to get more vaccines deployed to the west side of Marin County. And then I'll turn it back to Kira to talk a little bit about Chrome six, and she's the water quality.
So Chrome six is like, you know, it's a very big issue. It's been a real issue for your community. Uh, we've worked for a couple of years to try to work with the Department of Water, um, Water Resources Control Board, actually. In in order to try to find some additional budget or grant funding opportunities. We're still working on that, because it's been particularly hard since most of the money that's gone through the state for water for this kind of cleanup and remediation has really gone to communities that don't have clean drinking water. Um, and so we're continuing to work on that issue.
Very good. So um, one thing I will mention uh now, at this point in the presentation, is uh we uh came across an opportunity for Los Banos. And this is my little bit budget uh update. Uh, so the good news from Sacramento, if there is such a thing, it is the state is awash in cash. They're going to have a very significant surplus this year, which means there will be opportunities uh for Los Banos. Perhaps, you know, get the additional money for the public safety training facility. But also, uh, the one of the uh budget requests that has been floating around for a little less than a month is uh by the C T C to get two billion dollars of this extra cash that's floating around Sacramento. And fund some of the projects that were applied for for the active transportation program. Uh, they had a very limited amount of funding, so I think they funded twenty three out of uh three hundred and and thirty uh uh applications. So uh they went through and they're asking for two billion dollars to fund all the projects that scored above sixty points on the scale. And the good news is uh Los Banos has a project, the Pioneer Road Regional Path. Uh, that would be funded if this budget request is successful. Uh, that request from Los Banos is for eleven point seven five six million dollars. So uh that is something, working with your staff on uh getting uh letters of support, contacting your legislators. And uh seeing if we can help push that across the line, so we can get that Pioneer Regional Path built. Okay, services?
Sorry, it's not working. There we go.
Oh, me. Sorry about that. So services that we typically do, legislative program consultation. So we do an annual, help you with your annual legislative program or your policy platform. Uh, we typically will meet with department heads once or twice, either once a year or once every other year. Uh, where we sit down and find out what are the big issues going on in your community? What are things that we need to be looking for from state budget funding grants, that type of thing? Or if you're applying for any grants, if we can get support from your legislators or try to work through getting additional help of getting the grants. Um, we also talk about one of the priority legislative issues. Are there are there issues that we should be looking out for in legislation? Are there issues that you need legislation for? Uh, once we have that that information, we sit down with the city manager and we go through what are the priorities uh from the city. From a legislative advocacy standpoint, we do represent the city in state in state hearings. So in any of the legislative hearings, there are times when we also represent clients before state departments. Um, so it might be at a regulatory proceeding or some other proceeding. Uh, we go through all twenty five hundred bills every year, and we go through all the amendments. Uh, we also review any state executive proposals, administrative roles, and then provide regular reporting out on priority issues or bills that we think are important for your staff to really be taking a look at, be aware of that. Uh, we help with preparation of letters and testimony. Um, and then we also facilitate any communications and meetings. So for instance, if you were at the, you know, like League's having their legislative days next week, if you're up in town or if you're doing it virtually, we would set up. We could set up meetings with your legislators and help facilitate that. Uh, at times, sometimes we'll have councils that will want to come up and have semi-annual meetings with their legislators, and we'll facilitate that. And make sure that we're we're getting all of that taken care of. Uh, we also work on funding advocacy, so we advise and assist in the preparation of state appropriations, other funding opportunities, as David just mentioned, potential budget opportunities. Uh, and we work through those processes and figure out what are what are your priorities, which we've gotten this year. And we've been already in communication with both of your your assembly member and your senator on those issues, and their offices are well aware. Um, and then we also do all the registration on behalf of the city for your compliance with all the reporting requirements mandated by the Lobbying Disclosure Act at the F P T C. Next slide.
Good. Uh, so as Kira mentioned, uh, and I think Stephen did as well, there are twenty five hundred bills introduced uh this year. So the COVID pandemic has not slowed them down on uh legislation. I guess the good news is uh we just passed a deadline week, and bills had to get out of their first policy committee. So many of the bills, many of them that we had concerns about, have become two-year bills, meaning that they have to be parked until next January. So of the legislation, we have sent and reviewed and sent seventy bills that we think have an impact on the city of Los Banos. And and we have gotten requests from Senator Caballero uh directly to the 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 city of Los Banos to support uh S B three forty seven dealing with urban forestry. Uh, and we also got a request dealing with uh or S B twenty eight. Uh, trying to address uh the digital divide and uh access to broadband for all uh all communities. So that's just an example of some of the things that we've been doing for you this year, so Kira will take.
Next slide, please. Oops.
There is some.
There we go. In addition to the economic development, job creation opportunities in the budget, priority local control and housing bills. Uh, we've also been watching the following bills that we think um are are potentially pretty big ones. So S B nine by Atkins, this is the lot split bill that you may have been hearing about. It's one of the main bills in the Senate Housing Production Package this year. It's a rerun of S B eleven twenty from last year, and would require our local government to ministerially approve a housing development containing two residential units in a single family zone, as well as ministerially approve an urban lot split. And under the bill, a developer could go from one home on one lot to two homes plus two ADUs on two lots in the same space. The bill right now has strong support from housing advocates and opposition from local government groups, labor groups, and social justice groups. Um, A B two fifteen is another bill that we're watching very closely. Uh, this one would put in the in put in place a new system for monitoring and forcing what's called relative progress in meeting your R E N A numbers. Which are your housing planning numbers, uh, planning target, I should say. Under the bill, Department of Housing Community Development would create a checkpoint halfway through the eight-year R E N A cycle to assess how close cities are to meeting their target. Which would have to meet with H C D about how to speed up your progress. And cities that are substantially behind, so more than ten percentage points below the regional average, would be required to adopt new pro-housing policies. That bill is in Assembly Appropriations, and it has pretty strong opposition from most local governments. Um, it's one that we are we are actually watching very closely. A third one, which is not really moving at this point, but we just think it's an interesting uh take, is it actually a constitutional amendment by Assembly Member Mestucci, that is, if approved by the voters, would provide that a county or city ordinance or regulation enacted under the police power that regulates zoning and land use would prevail over conflicting general laws, including state statute. So that's one that was brought forward by a number of um local control advocates that that are trying to change the state constitution so that your local ordinance could override the state housing laws, is what they're really going after in some of these very uh prescriptive housing laws that they're concerned about. So with that, the next slide, I believe that's our last one, which will stop and answer any questions might have.
Thank you very much for your excellent presentation. And uh, we're gonna go to our council and go through the council to see who has questions or comments regarding Emmanuel Jones. Uh, so we'll start with Mr. Jones.
No questions or comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lambert?
No questions here, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I just have uh one question at this time, and that is, um, how often has your organization met with our staff? And uh, what reports have you sent down?
We, well, we uh we have met uh the, we have met with your city manager, uh, prior city manager. Uh, uh, whenever he called, he liked to pick up the phone and call us whenever we had an issue. Uh, we did, as Kira mentioned, when we first uh. We did, as Kira mentioned, when we first had the contract, we did have a meeting with all of your department heads in one of your bigger conference rooms. So we would normally do that every other year. And we have had lots of conversations back. The meeting that we had, kind of became the genesis of the request for the public safety training facility that resulted in the $5 million budget request because the inadequacy of your current jail was so glaring and it was very, very compelling for our legislators to say, let's fund that. So it was really on an ad hoc basis, but we're very open to a more formalized arrangement with your staff and with you, with the council if that would be more appealing.
And, and council member, I would just add that we send a weekly report that, every Thursday, that goes to your staff, that also contains all the bills that we're monitoring, includes political notes about what's happening in Sacramento, tidbits of anything that we're picking up on in terms of grants or funding opportunities, that kind of thing. And that goes out every Thursday midday.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Yamas, any questions or comments?
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, we certainly appreciate that $5 million and all the other projects that you are working to help us bring. And we appreciate your visit, virtual visit here to Los Banos. Hopefully after COVID, we may be seeing you person. So thanks again. And if you have any parting comments, we'd love to hear them. And then I'll turn it back over to Acting City Manager Breezy.
I would just say thank you very much for giving us the time on your agenda. We really appreciate working with, with, working with the city and looking forward to working with you in the future.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Breezy?
No further, Mr. Mayor. David, Kira, thank you for presenting tonight. Appreciate it.
Welcome. Thank you. And we'll move on to item 10. One more presentation. This is going to be from Buxton Company Retail Recruitment. This will be their update and presentation. For that, we'll go to Community and Economic Development Director Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So tonight, we will be having a presentation from Buxton. The city has partnered with Buxton since 2017. Our partnership helps the city understand our consumer profile so that we can translate that to retailers. And we are able, through Buxton's analysis, provide reports and market analysis that speaks the language of retailers and helps tell the story of Los Banos. We've been pretty successful with our partnership with Buxton. We've been attending the International Council of Shopping Centers, ICSC, their retail convention. We attend the Monterey Convention. It's the IDEA Exchange, and, and that's for Northern California specifically. And then we also attend the Las Vegas Retail Convention, which is the national, the big retail convention that everyone is at. And through those leads and with our partnership with Buxton, we have had the opportunity to attract new retailers to Los Banos, but also with our demographic and marketing analysis, we've been able to help retain business as well. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Cheyenne Robinson, our account manager from Buxton Co.
Thank you, Stacy. And good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, city staff. Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here virtually this, this, this evening. Love to get out and visit Los Banos again in person when it's safe for us. I'll, I'll do so. So we'll go ahead and go on to the next slide, please. As Stacy mentioned, I have the pleasure of supporting you, and we've worked together for, for many years, since we began our partnership in 2017. But for those of you that I haven't had the pleasure of meeting, again, I'm Cheyenne Robinson. I'm the Senior Account Executive of our Public Sector Division at Buxton, and I have the pleasure of supporting city staff with Consumer Intelligence for Economic Development. So on the next slide, we'll talk through what we're going to cover today. So I'm going to walk you through key partnership highlights, as well as our new business retention tools. I'm going to share with you some retail attraction insights, as well as some recent success that has yet to be announced. Now, for those of you that are not familiar with who we are, we've worked with thousands of clients. We began our work in 1994, so we've been working with retailers directly for over 27 years. Marriott, for instance, they partner with us to understand who are their best customers, where are those best customers found, and what is the value to their organization to increase home run locations and decrease putting a low performer in the marketplace. Now, about over a decade ago, we had a community that approached us and they said, well, if you can tell retailers what type of businesses or what cities that they should locate in, can you tell us what type of businesses would likely locate in our community? And so that's where our Public Sector Division really got, really began. Now, on the next slide, we'll take a look at some of the key areas that we work in and we're talking about, how do you use consumer intelligence for, for economic development? We've worked with hundreds of clients in helping them with retail development, knowing the right type of retailers to pursue. We're going to take a look at those results that we've had in Los Banos here in a moment, as well as knowing who your visitors are to help increase visitation, knowing also the pass-through traffic to try to see what would make them stop. Understanding the population's needs from a healthcare perspective. One thing at Buxton that we pride ourselves in is that we're always evolving and we see ourselves and we really are serving your city staff as an extension, we're an extension of the city staff. Now, we provide an, an abundance of resources that would not be available from, without our partnership. This includes healthcare insights, strategic analytics and support that have resulted in attracting several retailers to this city. On the next slide, we'll take a look at some of the key results that we've had. And this is from a healthcare analysis that we did in, in 2020. So we found that from our analysis, that Los Banos is a regional based on the traffic for obstetrics and gynecology provider-based care, so OBGYN care, whereas pediatric is the largest opportunity and really need for, for healthcare in Los Banos. Now, this information is being utilized in, between city staff and existing healthcare system to have strategic discussions on those opportunities. But as far as our retail results to date, on the next slide, we'll take a look at some of those results. Our recommendations and knowing so that your staff isn't just guessing at what type of retailers to try to pursue, call and ask to come into the community, we've done the homework for you. We've told you, these are the companies that are best used, the city resources to pursue. And as a result of having the right information to pitch to those retailers and having a team like Stacy to be able to communicate that to those companies, you've successfully, successfully recruited Ross, Boot Barn, Deli Delicious, Marshalls, Dutch Brothers, Chipotle, and Grocery Outlet is coming and going into the old Save Mart location. Our partnership has sparked interest with multiple letters of intent, site visits, meetings with warehouse club retailers, restaurants, clothing stores, and general merchandise, general merchandise stores as well. Now, Stacy mentioned ICSC, which is the International Council of Shopping Centers. Through our partnership and our network and contacts, the city has made, had many face-to-face meetings at that show. It is supposed to be coming back in 2021 in December. It has been on pause for the last couple of, of years. But Dutch Brothers and Chipotle were a direct result from those meetings and from that trade show at ICSC Recon in, in Las, Las Vegas. Now, overall, it does take quite a bit of consistency and persistence to tell that story to the retailers, get on their radar, show that Los Banos has done their homework, develop that relationship and network, and, and not to mention the importance of building relationships with the brokers and, and the process. For instance, Ethan Conrad, they use our Buxton information and the analytics as a part of their marketing materials for tenants. And while retail attraction is a key element of our partnership, we have to remember the importance of the businesses that have already invested in Los Banos and made an investment into your community. So we have developed other tools in addition to our matching, like our mobile analyses to help those small business owners, which we'll take a look at on the next slide. Now, in the start of the pandemic, we realized that we had to pivot, like everyone across, everywhere has, has had to pivot. And part of that was realizing that our clients needed answers and minutes and not months. And so we developed tools to give Stacy the ability to understand the trends that are happening in Los Banos and to be able to provide intelligence for small businesses so they can get a grasp on what's going on. Our Mobile Lytics Report, it analyzes foot traffic based on device data, so it's giving you precision and accurate insights. On the next slide, we'll see what this report allows you to do is analyze any location, understand who are the consumers going to that particular site, and it is anonymous data, and it tells your community the type of people visiting a particular location, where they're traveling from, which is extremely insightful for small, small business owners that don't have typically that level of insight into their consumer base. Now, on the next slide, we're going to take a look at an overview for some key insights for downtown. So those, that map that you're seeing there, that's a heat map illustrating where people live that have visited your downtown area. So you can see the dark red area, that is around Los Banos, and so that's where the day-in, day-out sustainable customers are going to be. But you do have a strong consumer market, you can see throughout the Bay Area. Now, this tells a business owner in downtown what their trade area is and who are the top consumers. Like I mentioned earlier, this data is anonymous, so it does protect the consumers and their privacy and still allows those existing business owners to know the downtown customer, who it consists of. So here it shows, we've got young singles, they're digitally driven, they prefer to be communicated with radio and email. You've got more established boomers with adult children in the household, mid-scale singles, lower middle-class households that like to read the newspaper. And this level of information gives your business owners accurate data that major retailers are using to make their, their decisions. Even further, on the next slide, we know the people that visited downtown, and we're specifically looking at clothing stores, that they're also going to places like H&amp;M. There's leakage to Marshalls in Gilroy, there's leakage to Burlington in, in Gilroy. Now, Marshalls is, has opened up. Now, we did look at a pretty large time period, so it wasn't open for the entire time that we analyzed here in these downtown numbers. So Marshalls is a great example of working to cut that leakage and dollars leaving Los Banos to keep them local into your, your community. And so that's a key result to the, the partnership is cutting that retail leakage. Now, on the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about our partnership historically. So historically, how it's worked is we would do one time a static report that would give you the answers of here, all of your retail matches. Then you would have to wait until the next year for us to give you that new list of, of matches. With the pandemic, we had to pivot and pivot quick. Our customers needed those answers quickly. And so we developed a tool in our analytics platform, which we call Scout. It's an online platform where Stacy now has the ability to click a property or site, select the retailer that she would like to analyze, and it'll then tell her, is this retailer a match for this, this location? And 120 seconds versus a couple of, of months. So on the next slide, you know, this information, it not only tells you if a retailer is a good fit, but it also tells you which ones are not a good fit. So that helps your staff prioritize resources, not spinning their wheels on companies that just are not a good fit for, for the community. And it gives your city staff the ability to support your brokers with on-demand data to help them attract brands to their property in Los Banos. Now, a few of our results from the most recent match analysis include some of the retailers on the next slide. So we've got Chick-fil-A, Old Navy, restaurants like Buffalo Wild Wings. Now, we've had conversations about smaller, more regional brands as well, and we're always thinking about downtown and what retailers to attract there. We have added a focus this year on car dealerships, putting Los Banos on the map with those brands, as well as the hospitality industry. I mentioned earlier, Ethan Condon has been using our analysis and packaging it into his marketing materials to approach the retailers and make a strong case as to why they should be locating at his shopping center, and it's working. We've been able to find anchors to backfill shopping centers as a result. Big Lots is coming. And so that is news, and, and that was a direct result of our partnership. That actually was one of the retailers from our initial discussions that we found is a strong fit for your community, and now they're going into the former JCP, JCPenney lo, location. So we are really excited about these new businesses that are coming into your community, all from a result of having the partnership, having the results, and having your Community Development Director being able to have these conversations with retailers and truly speak the same language that they, that they speak, and, and that's with the data and, and technology. So on the last slide here, this is just a recap here. All of our findings and analytics are deployed into one tool, and that is an online platform called Scout. Stacy has direct access to that. So she is the primary user for your community. We, we have regular calls, monthly trainings to make sure that you guys are getting the most out of, out of this tool. And this is where all the information lives and can be extracted, and you can run your own analyses through this system as, as well. Now, I know I've covered quite a bit of information this evening. Love to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you for your very thorough presentation. We'll go through council for questions. Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
Just maybe one comment or question. Have we looked out, or do we have anything that we're looking forward towards, like industry, whether just retailers or just anything for industry, agriculture? Or do, or do we have any matches for any of that?
I can explain. So our relationship with Buxton is specific to healthcare and retail. So they do not specialize in attracting industry, industrial-type users or manufacturers. However, we do have a partnership with Chaven Concepts. Because we were experiencing such great success with Buxton, we thought at, you know, at staff level, well, let's see if we could replicate that on the industrial side of things. And so that's why we have now Chaven. So they're separate from Buxton, and their focus is on industry, manufacturing, and attracting technology. But we have had, so prior to you, Councilmember Lambert, joining the city council, being a part of the city council, we did have a presentation pre-COVID with Chaven Concepts, but I'm sure they are due for a presentation here soon, and I'd love to bring them back to give you an update on what we're doing there.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one question. Cheyenne, that second to the last screen that you had up, is there a possibility of bringing that back up again?
Um, Sonia, hang on, Sonia, I don't know if Sonia's still there. There we go. Thank you, Sonia.
It's the one prior to this. That one. Okay, so you said Big Lots is coming in. Is, is there any movement that you can share with us on any of the other logos that you have up here?
So that is a great question. Because of confidentiality, Big Lots, and we were given permission to make that announcement today. With the other companies, it's, it's really, we're still in a process of, of having conversations and engaging with them. So we, we can't really provide any updates on those, but these are companies that we're working to continue to communicate that story that they should be considering a location in Los Banos, but no confirmed results either way with the other retailers that you see on this list.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No questions. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, this is an excellent presentation, I'm sure everybody's excited to hear that Penny, the old JCPenney building will be filled with uh, with Big Lots. Um, also, I, I noticed in your presentation, you mentioned healthcare. And you know, Los Banas, we have a, we have, our hospital here is good, but it's not very big. And uh, healthcare, as you may have noticed in uh previous, previous presentations that we have, particular uh challenge bringing uh medical services to Los Banas. And if there's anything you can do to help us in that realm, we would very much appreciate it.
Absolutely, Mayor. Um, and, and that was a big component of um, of, of the analysis that we did in 2020. Unfortunately, I had to keep it really brief um, um this evening on, on the work there. Um, but um, um, know that Stacy does have those results, and then she is absolutely having those conversations um to try to fill those gaps um and work towards expansion um for, from a healthcare, uh, for those healthcare needs of your residents in Los Banas uh with, with our findings. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
If I can add-
That's, please.
Just that information, that analysis, uh, really helped tell a story of where that leakage is occurring and how it's occurring. Uh, so it was, we're able to explain to our healthcare providers, um, like Cheyenne said, there is a big opportunity in pediatrics, um, but where there, you know, there's leakage in gynecology, um, and where there's opportunities in Los Banas. Um, so we continuously, you know, try to provide that information um to our healthcare providers um as a way to attract, you know, more providers to Los Banas. Obviously, there's a need, and that was really the intent of the analysis to show that uh, we have the capacity to sustain those healthcare systems, those services in our community.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, we wanna thank uh Ms. Robinson from, from Buxton, and thank you, Ms. Yamas, for, for arranging for the presentation. We very much appreciate all the new shopping opportunities and the new opportunities to glean more sales tax into our city coffers, which Ms. Williams is always happy to access. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful, as I've been telling all our presenters, normally I would say have a safe trip home and enjoy Los Banas while you're here. So, uh, I imagine you don't have a lot of traveling to do, so have a good night's evening.
Thank you.
Next, we will go to our uh new waste provider, Solid Waste Pickup Mid Valley Disposal LLC. And that, for that, we will go to Acting Public Works Director, City Engineer, Mr. Possession.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The item that we have before you is for information only, is presented by Mid Valley.
There you go.
Last November, the council approved the contract with Mid, Mid Valley Disposal LLC for residential and commercial garbage, recyclable materials, and organic waste collection services. The contract, as you know, will become effective on July 1st, uh, 2021, so we are getting very close. The contract calls for presentations to the council during the transition period. This is the second presentation, the first one uh was made on April 7th. So once again, this afternoon, we have Mr. Joe Kalpikoff, President of Mid Valley Disposal, and he's ready to give the council another update on the transition progress. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Kalpikoff.
Thank you, Fred. Uh, and good evening, Mayor Lewis, Councilmembers and staff, Joseph Kalpikoff, Mid Valley Disposal. Uh, tonight, I've got a quick presentation, another one, following multiple presentations, so I will make this uh short and sweet and leave it open for questions at the end.
It's just not working.
Sonia, that may be, it may be a PDF, we may just have to scroll through it, which is fine, I could do that, or you can.
I can't, sorry, I'm having difficulties right now with my computer in general, and I can't get it to work. So let's just stop and maybe try to start it over. I couldn't even get the mute to unmute, so it, it's just not changing to the view. Let me close it. Oh, goodness. Sorry, everybody, this laptop is just about done, I think. Close, let me try to open it back up.
Do you want me to make you host instead of co-host?
No, it's just, um, it just doesn't wanna take the, usually you could do a view, a view screen, and it just won't accept that command here. So I think that we could do it now, it's just gonna be a little smaller than we're used to. Okay, if you wanna go, I'm sorry about that. I think that's the best we're gonna get.
I like it. I think you worked through this.
Okay.
Next time, we'll do it in person. Um, okay, so we'll, we'll get started here. We're gonna talk a little bit about where we are with the assets, the carts, the bins, and the trucks coming into, into Los Banos, um, some of the outreach that we've um already addressed, and the mailers, and some social media posts, and then we'll look at the employees and the transition there. Next slide. We have, uh, all of our trucks uh have been purchased, and they are here in Fresno getting um kind of A and D stickers, phone numbers, um, going on routes to make sure there's no bugs in there, and, and, and they work properly when they get to Los Banos. We look, we're looking at getting them out to uh Los Banos mid to end of June. Um, and we'll be ready to go. The facilities that we've got, as we mentioned the last time, we have an office uh in downtown Los Banos, 502 I Street. Uh, new carpet, new paint in there, we are getting the computer set up now. Um, and so we will be ready to go in about two to three weeks there, opened up uh and have it staffed. Truck yard, 542 Mercy Springs has been executed. Um, A and D yard for equipment, that's the new carts and, and uh containers coming in uh in the middle of May. That will, that's at 549 Mercy Springs. Um, and then a quick update, we, we just received this week, which was some great news from the Billy Wright landfill. Um, they will have the new recycling pad and the new green waste, food waste pad completed uh for July 1st. And what, what we're gonna do there is bring the, the, the green waste collected from the residents, dump it at the Billy Wright, it will be transloaded uh and brought back to our facility in Kermit to make compost. Um, same thing with recyclables, the recyclables will end up at Billy Wright on their new recycling pad. And we will uh transfer those back to Fresno to be sorted, baled, processed, and turned into new um plastics and bottles and cans. So the containers, as I mentioned, they'll be here in mid, mid-May to end of May. Um, they will be distributed, all brand-new containers at the lumberyard. We will be using um the same customer or the same bin uh cart delivery as Republic does. So when they set out the new carts, our new carts, they will remove the Republic ones as well. Um, it's, it's easier to have the same company do that, it's less confusion. We'll also roll out a welcome kit. And with that welcome kit with the new carts, you'll have the collection day, it'll have the recycling services on there, what goes in each cart. Um, it'll also have some information on uh when to put the carts out on the street, where to put them out, and when to take them in and where to put them be- uh behind a fence, so they're not visible to the public. Um, the old carts, again, will be removed and uh taken back to the yard where the Republic will um redeploy them or recycle them at that time. Next slide. Outreach. So as you know, we've uh, we're on our second mailer, um, that hit, and uh change is coming, and you can see that mailer up in the top right corner, it's got a QR code on there. And with that code, they can link some right to our website where they can opt for more services, uh sign up for updates, recycling information. Um, we also are uh send out an e-blast with the Chamber of Commerce, the Los Banas Downtown Association, and your community uh economic development. And uh we are look, currently looking at the multifamily surveys, so where your opinion matters, that was going out to the multifamily. We kinda wanna get to know them, are there any gate codes we need, uh any special services that you need and get that in for July 1st? Um, we've also scheduled a uh, a round of town halls. So we have three town hall meetings um at the Henry Miller Community Center on May 26th, June 8th, and June 12th. We will be announcing those on social media, we'll have mailers, and we'll be at the Mother's Day event this weekend, and we'll be handing out uh brochures, flyers to that event as well. We'll be going, at the town halls, we'll be kinda having a presentation on the new services coming into town, when we start, and we'll be there just to answer any questions that they have. Community engagement. We were at, we attended the Spring Fair on April 17th, where we distributed multifamily and re- residential flyers. Um, again, we'll be at Mother's Day at the park this weekend, uh come out and see us. And we'll be meeting with the Downtown Association and businesses to get some more information out to them as well. We will, we are scheduling a, a ribbon-cutting content, or ribbon-cutting ceremony, excuse me, at our downtown office. Uh, we schedule that for the first week of June, and so we'll get that invite to you guys and hope to see you out there. Next slide. Employees are coming along. Uh, we have a supervisor um that started uh last week, and he's on his second, uh second week of training here at Kermit with us. A recycling coordinator has been hired in January, she's out on the streets now, Jessica Sanchez, if you've seen her. Um, we've got one more additional recycling coordinator coming on. And we have a dispatch CS already hired coming in the middle of June. So we are on, on the track to have enough employees to service um Los Banos. And uh, we do have a job fair, I'll speak it out a little bit, we're gonna have a job fair down at our office on May 15th, but I will have a little bit more information on that. So just to kind of a recap, the, the three months, we've got May coming up. Um, we're in the middle of May, we got commercial waste assessments, um filling open position, residential routes are completed, and we've opened our offices. June next month, leading up to July 1st, we're gonna have our town hall meetings. Um, commercial routes will be completed. We're doing dry runs with our trucks to make sure we have low wires and know all the, all the ins and outs of Los Banos. Um, and we'll do our, uh, roll-off container exchanges with Republic. Those are the large boxes that maybe only go once a week, or tw- uh, maybe once every two, uh, two weeks, something of that nature. We'll start gearing up to get those, that transition done early. And then July, we'll have the residential uh container exchanges with uh, coinciding with Republic, and the commercial container exchanges as well coming up in July. Um, and then the last slide is where to find us, our local office is 502 I Street. Uh, see us this weekend, Mother's Day in the park, and coming is the job fair that we will have on May 15th. We'll get that out by Friday, uh to see where they can post on your website, our website, and other social media. With that, I will uh leave it up to questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll go to council for questions and comments. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, no questions, but uh I just wanna uh say I'm excited to see a new uh vendor come in place, and hopefully we can uh get our uh trash issues uh completely resolved here come the second half of this year. So I'm excited.
Thank you, Mr. Lambeau. Uh, Mr. Lambert?
No questions here, uh, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, no questions, but just a comment and uh in the thoroughness of uh this company to be able to garner a yard, a place for the trucks and the carts and an office uh to communicate with our public and to be engaged in our community at this early stage to give out information and help them understand what the process is and what the expectations are. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Uh, Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I appreciate the presentation, the information. I had two questions. Uh, confirm your uh local office is not open?
It is currently um not open to the public. We are getting the, some IT work done, um, pulling some cables for computers and having, planning to have that up in the next two weeks. We're having uh, our job fair will be there on May 15th. So it'll be accessible at that point in time, but open to the public probably closer to end of May, early June.
Thank you. Now, second is uh, so you're still soliciting for drivers. Does that mean that you do not currently have enough drivers? And will you meet, be able to meet the expectation uh of that date of having the Department of Transportation hiring, testing, uh, et cetera? Will you be able to make that target date?
Yes, we have, we have no issues or no prob, we don't foresee any issues with us having drivers onboard. It takes about two weeks through our company to get them hired. Again, we have, we're seven weeks out. Um, we have a couple of drivers already in the, already in the pipeline and hired and training in Kermit, um, as well as the current drivers who wanna come onto our company as well.
How many drivers are you currently short?
We are, I would say today, we're not short any drivers. Um, we will be short drivers in, at the end of June, closer to the start date, but I, you know, I, I don't foresee that being a, an issue or a challenge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas, and thank you for the presentation, thank you for the community engagement. Uh, we're very pleased to see that and looking forward to. And we're also very pleased to see that Billy Wright getting that extra entrance and drop-off there. It's gonna make a big difference for not just the, the garbage, uh, waste trucks, but the local people going in and out. It's gonna double the availability of space. So thanks again for coming tonight. Um, any parting comments, uh, Mr. Kalpikoff or uh, Mr. Possession?
Just our, our teams with the city are, are working hard, we're still meeting constantly in communication. And, you know, so far, it's been a really, really great uh transition, and um we are excited to start in, in July.
Very good, thank you.
What I've uh told Joe all along is that they have raised the bar, and they have committed to keep the bar as high as they have set it thus far. So I'm very excited about them coming aboard, and I see every sign thus far in the past several months that we have worked together that they are very committed to providing the highest level of service. So that's the part that, that is really exciting.
Very good. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Uh, we'll move on to item 12. This is actually an action item tonight, believe it or not. Um, consideration of adoption of City Council Resolution Number 6366, authorizing the acting city manager to execute a cooperative agreement with the state of California through its Department of Transportation, Caltrans, to provide oversight in the development of the project approval and environmental document, P A N D D, for the improvements on the Pioneer Road widening project at locations where Caltrans has jurisdiction. And for that, we'll go to Acting Public Works Director, City Engineer, Mr. Possession.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I uh have provided quite a bit of detail in the staff report. Uh, my intention was not to give you a complete chronology of the entire Pioneer Road project. I just wanted to provide some background, easy reference for some of the facts pertaining to the co-op agreement. Uh, it's all there, I will not go into all of it, but first, I would like to describe the project briefly, just in case uh one of the viewers or some of the viewers are not uh as familiar uh with what the project entails. Pioneer Road by a widening project is a six-and-a-half-mile, four-lane arterial road with a Class 1 multi-use path. It is proposed to start at a new signalized intersection just east of Los Banas Creek at Pacheco Boulevard. The alignment from there runs south to Pioneer Road, and then east along Pioneer Road to Ward Road, and from there north along Ward Road uh to a signalized intersection at Ward and Pacheco. Uh, this uh project is uh to be designed based on city standards. Uh, so when the city, after the city entered into a professional services agreement with Mark Thomas and Company for the project, the council approved a similar co-op agreement on May 20, 2020, uh for Caltrans to provide oversight in the development of the project study report, project development support, or PSR, PDS for the project improvement locations, again, for the same locations that Caltrans has jurisdictions, and those are basically the intersections with state routes. Uh, development of that document, PSR, PDS, was the first phase of Mark Thomas's con- Of Mark Thomas's contract that was approved at that time. And the co-op agreement was obviously, uh, necessitated by that to have Caltrans's. Cooperation and oversight and involvement in the development of that report. That report is done, phase one was done and as you recall, on March third, a couple of months ago. Uh, we came before the council and the council approved the amendment number one. To the professional services agreement with Mark Thomas. And that was for phase two. That is the reason for this co-op agreement to come before you. Phase two, we redefine that because of the funding, uh, source requirements as phase two A. Engineering services, that is entirely under Mark Thomas. Phases two B for environmental services and two C for surveying and right away services. And Mark Thomas is in the process of assisting us with soliciting, uh, for, uh, consultants to be brought onboard. For phases two B and two C. So, as I mentioned, the fact that we are in. The next phase or phase two of this project. Uh, necessitates that we enter into another co-op agreement specifically for this phase. So we can have Caltrans as a partner in the process. And for them to have oversight over the areas that they need to have oversight on. Uh, environmental being one, the design of the intersections and all of that is, uh, part of their. Involvement and requirement to be involved. So once the co-op agreement is fully executed. We can fully engage Caltrans, uh, officially start phase two with their involvement and participation. And the part that is very important to us is start the traffic studies right after that. And that can happen after our first official meeting with Caltrans. So with that, I'm ready to answer your questions and obviously I'm requesting that the council. Vote in favor of approving this co-op agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Possession, we'll go to council for questions and, or comments, Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert?
Uh, so the one question is, so this is actually bringing Caltrans on board to get everything to start, uh. So everybody can start seeing everything that's gonna be engineered, uh, the intersections.
Correct, correct, this is, this is all along, this has been a partnership with Caltrans. This is their mechanism for them to officially be able to be involved in the process.
Okay.
Yeah. And there is no cost associated with this, this is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for.
Lambert, Ms. Lewis?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Yamas?
No questions, just concern us to the viability of this project, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, uh, no further question or comment, uh, Cheryl entertain a motion to approve City Council Resolution number six three six six.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis would like to make a motion to approve Resolution number six three six six as read by title.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis, do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lambert, we'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert, I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Councilmember Lambert, excuse me, Mayor Portem Lewis and Councilmember Lambert. Um, to approve item six three six six, Resolution number six three six six. Go call vote, Ms. Melanie?
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Possession for the presentation.
Thank you.
Take us to item thirteen. An update on the status of the city of Los Banas State Route one fifty-two Signal Synchronization Project. And once again, we're going to Acting Public Works Director, City Engineer, Mr. Possession.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is unfortunately not an item for action, this is for information only at this point. And hopefully sometime in near future, we can come before you for, uh, an actionable item. Uh, this is, as I said, simply for information, uh, this is a project that's been, uh, in the works for a little while. And we have been trying to receive state and federal approvals so we can formally. Uh, kick it into gear, so to speak, and, uh, get going on the actual design of the project. In, uh, two thousand nineteen, the Los Banas State Route one fifty-two Safety Task Force was established. With the goal of making State Road one fifty-two a safer and more efficient roadway through the city. Uh, as part of that process, one of the projects that the task force identified was the State Road one fifty-two. Uh, Traffic Signal Synchronization Project. Uh, which would synchronize a total of fourteen traffic signal locations. Uh, within a five mile stretch through the city using wireless traffic signal interconnected systems. I've included a table that shows all the locations in the staff report for your reference. Uh, overall, in a nutshell, simply traffic signal synchronization is. A simple traffic engineering technique for matching. The green light times for a series of intersections. To enable the maximum number of vehicles to pass through. The goal is to reduce stops and delays that are commonly experienced by all of us drivers. Uh, with the help of our consultant, uh, Goveo Engineering, we applied for a CMAC grant. Uh, CMAC stands for, as you know, congestion mitigation and air quality. Uh, the total was nine hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars was for the, the design. And eight hundred thousand dollars for construction of the project. Uh, signal synchronization basically ensures a better flow of traffic. And reduces gas consumption and pollutant emissions. Reduction of green, uh, greenhouse gases is a primary goal of, uh, the CMAC funding process. Uh, the C, so that was a strong point for, uh, for approval of this project through the, uh, through the process. Uh, the, uh, benefits that it would, uh, provide to the whole corridor as far as greenhouse gas, uh, reductions. The CMAC, uh, committee of the Merced County Association of Governments, M C A G. Approved our grant application in June of last year. And then the M C A G governing board adopted the project into F TIP. Amendment for FY or fiscal year two thousand nineteen. F TIP is basically the Federal Transportation Improvement Program. Inclusion of this project through that amendment in that fiscal year. Provided the mechanism for federal funding for this project. To get there, obviously, we have to go through our local, uh, uh, planning organization, which is M C A G. Get on their list for their list to be adopted into the statewide program and from there to the federal level, which is the F TIP. Uh, so once that happens, the general process for a local agency like us is to submit. What is called a request for authorization to proceed with preliminary engineering, commonly known as RFAPE. But we wanted to make sure that we capture the costs of, of preparing that, uh, uh, that request. And also be able to get reimbursement for it, uh, when, when the federal authorization comes. You cannot charge and, and, uh, charge the state and the feds and expect reimbursement unless there is federal. Authorization, which is called E seventy-six Authorization to Proceed. But we use the mechanism that is allowed under section fourteen forty of FAST Act. Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act. It is called at-risk preliminary engineering, which basically says we assume the risk. Uh, and the risk is, uh, uh, something that is evaluated by Caltrans. This was a low risk, so they approved the process. At risk, again, is at our own risk, we proceed with the project with the expectation. And in this case, with Caltrans's, uh, approval of the process. The assurance that once the federal authorization, E seventy-six is received. We are eligible for reimbursement, reimbursement of all costs up to that point. So having that assurance and the approval from Caltrans, we started working on. Preparing the request for authorization for preliminary engineering. That went to Caltrans, Caltrans normal process, they review and approve it and submit that on our behalf. To Federal Highway Administration for, again, review and approval, that was done. And on March twelfth, uh, twenty twenty-one last, a couple of months ago. Finally, we received the federal authorization, as I mentioned, that is called E seventy-six Authorization. The next step, and that is for the preliminary engineering phase, which is a hundred thousand dollars, approvals come in phases. So that was for a hundred, uh, thousand dollars for preliminary engineering phase. And after that, the process is for Caltrans to prepare a program supplemental agreement. PSA also is the acronym for that. Basically what it does is it amends the master agreement. That was signed a few years ago between the city and the state for federal aid projects. It amends it to that contract, so we fall under the same agreement, uh, conditions. And requirements that were already approved by the council. That is the normal process of approving federally funded projects with local agencies. Uh, through the master agreement. So that, uh, PSA came to us and we already have the approved, fully executed. The PSA back from, uh, Caltrans. The process is along with that, they issue what is called a finance letter. It is very similar in, uh, to E seventy-six from, uh, federal, uh, government. But the significance of that is, uh, the, uh, federal or the, I should say, the finance letter is it allows us now. To invoice Caltrans for the costs accumulated up to that point, since we are now eligible to do that. And there is a mechanism through E seventy-six for Caltrans, again, in, in turn. To invoice the feds and basically be reimbursed for it. Uh, the finance letter also makes, uh, sure that, uh, the funds are encumbered for the project. So the feds authorize it, obligate it, and finance letter encumbers it. So it cannot be used for any other purposes. So that is what we were looking for, uh, to basically start, uh, getting into gear and. Uh, work on the, on the project. So Govea, our consulting engineering, is now preparing the preliminary environmental study. All projects have to go through environmental clearance. And this is the early stage, it's a long document that basically, uh, documents environmental concerns. It's basically a form of a questionnaire and pick and choose answers. That provides enough information for Caltrans's review. So they can determine what the environmental impact is. And whether they can grant outright a categorical exclusion for, for the project at the federal level. Uh, Govea is also working with us to make sure that the scope is verified. A little time passes, people move around, project managers change at the state level. It's always, uh, a good idea to get together and put our heads back together and say, this was the original intent. This is the funding that we have, today is a brand new day. What can we do to meet the intent of the, the project and deliver the project as approved? So that is what we are in the process of doing and also progress plans, that's a thirty percent stage of completion. We anticipate to have those available for cities review in midsummer. And based on our current schedule, we anticipate that the request for construction authorization. Will be submitted to Caltrans in June of twenty twenty-two. Again, that is a similar process to RFAPE. It has to go to Caltrans, it goes to the feds, feds issue an E seventy-six. For up to eight hundred thousand dollars at that point for construction. The state issues another, uh, program supplemental agreement. And along with that, another finance letter for an additional amount up to eight hundred thousand dollars. And with that, we can officially advertise the project and go into construction. So I hope I did not bore you with the entire process. That is the state and federal process that we have been going through. Uh, the good news is, since we have gone through that, now we can, uh, move as quickly as, as possible through the project. And, uh, sometime in June of next year, start advertising for construction. So with that, I'm, uh, I'm available to answer your questions, uh, as best as I can.
All right, well, uh, Mr. Jones, any questions or comments?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert?
Uh, so one, just one question, it's, so if we get these synchronized. Are they gonna drop the speed limit down or are they gonna, I mean, cause right now, you know. They travel pretty quick through there now as it is, if we start synchronizing, you think it's gonna increase the speed on some of these?
I doubt that they will change the speed, the idea is time, the signal change. So then if you go from, if you start from green at one intersection. Based on the distance and the speed posted speed limit to the next light. That is how the, the next signal timing is set. So if you follow the speed, by the time you get to the next intersection, the light is burning green. The same for the next one.
Correct.
If, if, if you try to beat that and make it to the next signal, sometimes you can ride early and you're still there. Up at the red, so by trying to beat the system and get faster, if the signals are centralized. You get penalized by getting there when it's still red. So folks change if you maybe go overtime and instead of trying to move fast and make it to the next light. Go at the same speed, knowing that they can go through, uh, and as they approach the next signal. For the next intersection, they go and it's going to be red. Well, that is.
I actually went from the Shell Station all the way to, uh, past Walgreens and went right straight through all the lights, so maybe I just caught them right. So, but I, I just wanted, I, you know, I hate for our speed limit to increase through that area. Cause I mean, you still have cars that are pulling up that are not at lights. Uh, you know, uh, we got these eighteen wheelers that just, they can't stop on a dime.
Uh, speed study and changing any, any posted speed limit is not part of this project. It is to accommodate more traffic with the posted speed limit. So that the signal timing is helping everybody to as fast as possible.
I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you're welcome, uh, we, maybe we should post, if, once we get this timing done, we'll post a little sign, please drive speed limit. Or to, to catch all the lights are synchronized. Who knows, maybe it'll work. Then again, if it doesn't. And again, if it doesn't, we can always, uh, ask our police department to write a bunch of tickets, bring in a bunch of revenue. Not to us, but, uh, to all the other entities that collect off those tickets. All right, um, Ms. Lewis?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Yamas?
No questions, thank you for that presentation, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, uh, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Possession.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing it happen. We will move on to item fourteen, the COVID nineteen status, status, however we like to pronounce it, update. Um, and for that, we go to Acting City Manager Breezy and City Attorney Vaughn.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a quick, uh, update on, uh, COVID numbers. I've actually got three topics that I want to discuss with you, uh, tonight about COVID or in relation to COVID, but let's talk about statistics real briefly. If you look at, uh, the California statistics up on the top left. If you look at the California statistics up in the top left corner there of that slide, you'll see that we're at about three point six million confirmed cases in California. That's up about twenty thousand from two weeks ago in our last presentation. And the number of deaths, unfortunately, has gone up from sixty, fifty-nine thousand to just over sixty thousand. So around a thousand more deaths in that time. So getting your vaccinations is still relevant and important. Take that, that seriously and consider that for your own personal health. I'll move on to the very bottom right there, the vaccine information for both the state and California. And we've administered over thirty, three point five million vaccine doses. That's not full immunization, that's just single doses. Some of the Johnson and Johnson, but some of the other two shots, so it's not full vaccination of our residents. That's about four point four million more vaccinations from two weeks ago. And in Merced County, we're up at a hundred and thirty-five thousand administered. That's about fifty-eight hundred more than we had two weeks ago. So you can see, especially in Merced County, having one shot in the arm of a hundred and thirty-five thousand of our residents, we're getting closer and closer to that two eighty-four number for our total population. So every day, every vaccination counts. That's important, because that gets us out of the red tier and into the next tier down, which is the orange tier, loosened restrictions, open businesses. And we're one of about six counties, six or seven, half dozen counties in California that are still in the red tier, but you'll see that our numbers are going down. We're getting there in the positivity rate to move down into the orange tier. We are within the range currently, so as long as that range doesn't spike, we'll be good there. That's just our daily case rate has to average between two and five point nine cases. Unfortunately, right now, we're at about eight point seven cases daily per hundred thousand residents. So I'll stop there and take a breath. It's kind of a lot of information. Does anyone happen to have a question about statistics?
I'll go through council. Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No questions here.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to find on the status update, the numbers that you quoted for how many people have had the one shot in Merced County versus over the, I guess, the past week, the increase. Could you help me find that, or is it on here?
If you go down to the bottom left, that's, I'm not, I don't show you the two numbers. I look back at the last presentation that I did, and I, I write notes on it. So I, I know what to present to you, but I don't have that information. But I'd be happy to provide it if you're looking forward to it. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no questions.
Thank you. Carry on, Mr. Breezy.
Okay, next we'll go to extending the existence of the local emergency regarding COVID-nineteen. Staff is asking that you pass the resolution, the city council, continuing the declaration of the existence of a local emergency within the city of Los Manos. The last council meeting, we held a lengthy and healthy discussion about this topic, and at that time, you would ask staff to come back with an extension of the COVID declaration that would take us through to the end of June. That's what we are here to discuss tonight. There's two options, really. If we don't extend it tonight, based on this resolution, the current executive order will terminate on May sixteenth. When that order terminates, two things will happen. We'll have to come up with a solution for the existing meeting times for both the city council and the planning commission. Currently, they're at four o'clock for council and five-thirty for the planning commission. They go back to the seven o'clock timeframe, their, their normal time slots that we had pre-COVID. The second part of that termination, if we allow it to terminate on May sixteenth, is that the waiver that we provide to businesses to have outdoor dining will also terminate or end as well. So we have a couple of options that we can do. I think tonight, what we're asking for is to continue the declaration of emergency based on the conversation that we had at the last council meeting. That will give us time to prepare for the end of COVID, the June fifteenth change, that we're still waiting on some of the direction from the governor on to determine what's gonna happen there. And it'll give us time to reflect on it and come to some agreement regarding the times for the meetings, as well as a determination on what to do with the extension of outdoor business dining. I have had a request from a council member to consider allowing those businesses to carry on with that outdoor dining, and that's something that we wanted to talk about in part three of our COVID update. But I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions. If there's no questions, I see the city attorney's, that his camera on. I'll also defer to Bill in case he has any comments regarding this topic. Thank you, Bill. I'll turn it over to you. If you don't have any questions, I would ask that you pass a resolution extending the COVID emergency declaration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go through, see if there are any new questions, new information. Mr. Jones?
No questions, but I just do have some comments for council regarding the outdoor dining, regardless if we extend the emergency order past June. I think we should keep the outdoor dining open till maybe the end of the year, because especially subcustomers, they may not feel comfortable eating inside, but maybe they feel comfortable eating outside. So I just want to give the businesses that flexibility. Maybe we push that out to the end of June, so if we created new ordinance or temporary ordinance to accommodate that. And then as far as the meeting times, it's just whatever council's gonna prefer. That's all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lambert?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So what was the date we were looking forward to extend it to? The end of June?
Yes, sir, June thirtieth.
Actually, it would be the last meeting in June. We would have to consider it, which I don't think is exactly June thirtieth. So it'd be the third Wednesday in June.
That would be June sixteen.
So it's actually, it would be sixty days from today.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Ms. Lewis?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I want to echo Mr. Jones' sentiments regarding outdoor dining. I think it's quite nice, actually, to have that opportunity for a lot of our dining establishments, especially with our beautiful summer evenings and our beautiful winter days, when it's not foggy or rainy. So, Mr. Vaughn, do you have anything to add to the conversation this evening?
The only thing I would add is just to remind the council that they adopted a resolution of intent, or a motion of intent at the last meeting to adopt this resolution. And that's basically what the focus of the staff report is and the current resolution. And the staff did not prepare to react to any other direction that might be taken tonight, other than that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Well, with that, then, City Council Resolution Number six-three-six-seven, continuing the declaration of the existence of a local emergency within the city of Los Manos for COVID-nineteen. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lambert here. I'll make a motion to adopt that resolution, number six-three-six-seven, as it reads.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis has a second motion.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert, seconded by Mayor Portem Lewis, to adopt City Council Resolution Number six-three-six-seven. Ms. Maloney will call.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Breezy. Mr. Vaughn? Well, that's...
One more, one more related topic, right, Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, my apologies. The last topic is a discussion that I'd like to have with you in regards to returning to in-person meetings. That date isn't set yet, we all understand that. Just to be clear, the declaration goes to the end of June, but we will have to revisit that before that to be prepared for the end of the, the emergency declaration. But looking ahead for move back into the council chambers, in-person meetings, I wanted to get a sense of a few things. One of those is the time of the meeting. Again, we don't need a consensus tonight. If we, if, if I get one, I, I think that's totally fine. It can change between now and then. We're just trying to get an idea of where we're gonna go. So time of the meeting, I sent some pictures today of mockups of what the council chambers could look like up at the dais. I'd like your input on that. And then we covered the outdoor dining, so I don't need to have a conversation with that one. I think I, I think I have clear direction on that one. So I think for the time being, if we want to discuss the meeting time, four to, four to seven or anywhere else in between, and then what type of safety measures we want to take for the in-person meetings would be great.
Okay, that, I think, is, would be, could be a very thorough discussion. And I'm wondering if it would be wisest to have council members contact you, talk to you about that and express their opinions, and then you can work something together to bring to a council meeting for. I think that would be the best way to do it. And each council member can express his or her own opinions and ideas, and then we can bring something to a council meeting that, that can be worked out very well. Does that, does that work? Council, is that okay? Is that okay with council? Give me a thumbs up for that, or would anyone like to chime in on that at this moment?
I appreciate the discussion, Mayor. I, I'm totally okay with that. I just want to present, it's like, don't wait to the last minute and then have to rush with, you all trying to get things together. I'm just trying to stay ahead of it.
Okay.
Totally okay with that. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Breezy. So council, go ahead and contact Mr. Breezy, and so we can get some idea of where we all want to go. And we can have a good, have those conversations. I think that'll work very well.
I'll send something out to you all.
All right.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item, so we'll close item fourteen, go to item fifteen, advisement of public notices, and tonight, there is no report. Which brings us, once again, to Acting City Manager Breezy for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly tonight, I had an opportunity to go on a tour of some of our lesser visited city facilities with Councilmember Lambert the other day. I just want to thank the staff that was out there. It's always a pleasure to get out, to see the men and women that we work with every day, get to let them talk about their expertise and their areas of responsibility. And it was, it was a great day. We're in the middle of the One Voice, One Voice tour right now. It's virtual, the mayor and I sit in these offices here with a fantastic group of delegates from around the county of Merced, speaking to representatives from Washington, although the mayor discussed that a little bit more than last. We had a citywide volunteer event on May first. That was a partnership between the Public Works Department and the Police Department, and we had a great turnout in the range of about forty-five youth volunteers from our community planted a bunch of trees. But I'll leave it at that tonight, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, I appreciate your time and attention. We'll go to good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, item seventeen, the report on M C A G, Peninsula Clean Energy and Measure V. M C A G, this is the One Voice normally fly out. It would, this, this year, we're doing it all virtually, meeting with senators, United States Government Lobbying. We met with congressmen today. We've met with the staffers, Senate staff, and various departments' staff. And the county is working very hard to bring, to find out the best way to, to apply for and pursue funding for the various projects. And what's very nice about this is different cities are, are in their presentations, are making requests for other cities. So Atwater, in their presentation, included requests for, for our pool or our aquatics center. And in Los Manos, I addressed the National Endowment of the Arts for music and public art in the whole county and our various towns. So it's a group effort, and putting ourselves on the map with them is a challenge, because we're too big to be small, too small to be big, and we are heavily impacted by the traffic that goes through us and the entire county, from all the major arteries, and all the various challenges it brings. So it's very good, I'll have more to report next time, because we have two more days of, of Zoom meetings. Peninsula Clean Energy in the process of interviewing the Citizens Advisory Committee members. We have some applicants from Los Manos, which is very cool. And then also interviewing people for the professional position, individuals for the professional position of community outreach. So that is going on, keeping very busy there. And then the Measure V Committee, we had quite a bit of discussion about the Pioneer, Chaco Pioneer Corridor, and that is ongoing. And we will continue with that, and if anything new comes up on that, I'll, I'll bring that to you. And with that, we'll go to our city council member reports. And tonight, we start with Mr. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little bit of my thunder was still there, but that's all right. But I want to thank Acting City Manager Jay Breezy for giving me the opportunity to actually take the tour with all the department heads. It, it was well worth it, just understanding each department, the role in our city, how our infrastructure works. They did an awesome job showing me around, and I greatly appreciate it. I would do it again, but I hope to see him out there again. And I sure appreciate it, Mr. Breezy. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, boy, that must have been an awesome time that you had, Ken. Some of us didn't have that opportunity, so congratulations. I have four council member requests tonight. Two of them I'd like to have by our next meeting, and the other two can be scheduled in. The first one is a request to bring back to the city in regards to, I think it's our charter ordinance regarding our meeting times, so that we can settle this and have it taken care of and not to have to discuss what we want to do. We can do it at that time. The second is, I'd like to bring to the council for discussion whether or not we want to retain or continue or to retain the lobbyist firm. So those two items, I'd like to request for our next council meeting. The next two, one is for Buxton, and it's not a critical thing, but I would like to see us add a council member along with the mayor to attend the trade ship. I don't know that we were asked about that in the beginning, but I think we need to have another person added from the council on that. And the last one is the Economic Development Advisory Committee. We have the Chamber of Commerce on that committee, but we don't have the Downtown Association. So I'd like to bring that back for consideration with the council to look at that. And that's my request this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
No comments, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I went in the wrong order. I should have gone to Mr. Yamas first. But since I went to Mr. Jones first, I'll go ahead and go back. No, no report tonight, Mr. Jones?
Correct.
Thank you. I've got Zoom eyes tonight. We've been on Zoom for about twelve, fourteen hours today, so. The, sometimes the eyes kind of wander a little on the page. Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have comment on is that I've gotten a couple of comments from some residents regarding trash and debris being left after the garbage can has been picked up. Not sure if that can be addressed, but other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, yes. Let's have that looked into, now that we're finally getting it picked up again. See if we can get it all picked up. And for my report, covered quite a bit tonight. The, wanted to comment on the cleanup day last week. You know, a bunch of young people and, and not-so-young people out working, planting trees, painting fences. Mr. Hy, Mr. Possession, Mr. Breezy, and the Police Department, Acting Police Chief Haddon. I'm gonna commend you on that outstanding work. And I want to thank Sherwin-Williams for their donation. I understand that they donate all the paint. I know they were, all, everyone was wearing Sherwin-Williams T-shirts. Mr. Breezy, did they, did they donate the paint that night for that? Mr. Breezy, did they, did they don- donate the paint that night for that event? Do you know? Or just the t-shirt?
Generally, that's what happens. We either buy uh, the paint at a discounted rate from Sherwin-Williams or they flat out donate it to us. And then the shirt's a compliment.
All right, very good. Uh, we thank everyone who worked and uh, I got a chance to pass out Otter Pops, which was a lot of fun. Uh, also, uh, that same morning, Senator Caballero came to town, talking to our, in our Chamber of Commerce, hosted her so she could discuss the local grants, the grants that are available to local businesses to help them get through the COVID and advance themselves. She also recognized two of our, probably our, two of our most, our oldest and most iconic businesses, the, the drugstore, Los Manos Drug and the uh, the Wool Growers Restaurant, um, which is actually Wool Growers Hotel is what it's actually called. So we thank everyone for all the great things we're doing for Los Manos. And with that, uh, we will move on to a closed session. Um, and our closed session has two items, but we will, we've learned that we will not need item A in the closed session tonight. We will only be required to address item B. And that is a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, seven, point six. Agency designated representatives, acting city manager Breezy, city attorney Vaughn, city clerk human resources director Maloney, finance director Williams, legal counsel Tufo, employee organizations, Los Manos Police Officers Association, L B P O A, Los Manos Police Sergeants Association, L B P S A, Los Manos Firefighters Association, L B F F A, Los Manos Police Dispatchers Community Services Officers Association, L B P D C S O A, Los Manos Public Employees Union, Public Works, Local One slash A F S C N E and Unrepresented Miscellaneous Employees. And we will report out after the meeting. And Ms. Maloney, Duane, uh, will we adjourn after we report out or do we want to adjourn now?
I would say we adjourn now and then we'll record like we have in the past.
Okay, very good. So chair will entertain a motion to adjourn and to go to closed session.
Mayor, council member Lambert, make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, council member Willis, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion by council member Lambert and a second by Mayor Portembois to adjourn the meeting. Ms. Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes, meeting adjourned at six twenty-six P M. We will see you to report out after our closed session. Thank you, everybody.
Pretty, so if everybody could just stay on, Sonia will stop recording. And then once Kelly gets on, we'll lock the meeting.
Going to do a quick stretch. Think Gary and I could just get you caught here tonight. Probably do just fine.
Been zooming, zooming on meetings all day.
Great, you can run more meetings with the Zooms because everybody's back to back, but no travel time, no walking.
But was today the last meeting?
No, we have two more days.
Two more days.
Four, four days worth. I've asked, usually, and it's very, it's very common for it to take place the week of the week of the fair.
Are you gonna come to your office?